Do you deal with issues of repairs, say for the markets or for the council structures?
Where is where is it?
Does this come up as part of the work that you do to decide? Or to assess and evaluate what needs repairs?
Can it come back?
As part of your work, do you assess and evaluate structures that need repairs? So, for example, the council structures, like the buildings or the marketplace, things like that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, give me an example, or give me a few examples.
For instance, when there is a boss five in the market, there was a boss five in the market.
Okay.
So we asked the plumber to go and solve that problem.
He asked which plumber?
Hmm?
Which plumber?
Plumber, one of the boys there, we asked him to go and solve the problem, but only on a small cost.
When you say one of the boys there, so you remember, I'm not there. So is it one of the private plumbers that works somewhere else? Which plumbers?
No, this boy, let me recall the name. I forgot the name, but there is a plumber that we usually engage to work on some of these things.
Okay, so you have a plumber that you usually use to fix?
But he's an employee of the council.
Okay. And what about structural issues?
Structural issues? Yeah, when we have structural issues, we just give the order for somebody to repair. For example, like, we have a slab that is broken at the market. So I just do the design, make the costumes, for also hire a machine to do it.
At this market, do you have canteens?
Yes, we have canteens.
Okay, and kiosks? Or are they about the same thing?
No, we have kiosks, we have, what do you call it, temporal and permanent structures.
Okay, and these were provided by the council?
For the permanent one, they are provided by the council, yes.
What about the temporary ones?
The temporary ones, maybe if we see, someone want to build a case where we think is suitable, we can ask the person to build it.
Do they pay anything to the council?
For building it all?
For, yes, for using their premises?
No, no, for land rental fee, they use, they will pay for the space.
How much?
They, that depends on the finance.
Finance decides?
Determine, yes.
Okay, and what about the market itself, their tables? The tables, are the tables the slabs?
The, the sets, you mean?
Maybe describe what the market is like.
No, the market is in two forms, we have canteens, we have sets where you have tables, concrete tables.
One hundred tables?
Concrete.
Concrete tables?
Yes.
Okay, are those the concrete slabs that you're talking about, or is that separate?
No, concrete just like this, that is made of concrete and you have the topping tile for women to use it.
Okay, so you have a hundred of those?
I'm not saying, I didn't tell you the number.
Do you know how many you have?
No, no, I didn't tell you the number of tables.
I now ask you, do you know how many you have?
No, 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 no.
So you have concrete tables for the market, which market is this again, sorry?
This is the new market that is built on the Senegamea Transquerer Bridge. We have, we have market, market with, sets with tables.
Okay.
If you go to Bureng also, we have a similar one in Bureng. Okay, at the Lumos side in Queenala, there is also a market set with tables. Even at Soma Main Market, we have it. On both markets, you know, we have three markets in Soma, all of them have similar structures.
Okay, and how often does the council conduct repairs at these markets?
It depends on the need.
So only if there's an need, you don't go in, say, every three years to assess?
No, no, we don't do that, we don't do that.
So when was the last time that you conducted repairs on any of these markets?
No, no, since I came, there was no major rehabilitation on the markets.
Okay, do you think that any of the markets require rehabilitation?
Unless if you want to rehabilitate, it looks need, unless if you want that.
So I'm asking you, do you think they need it, or are you saying that it's only for cosmetic?
There should be a periodical need of rehabilitating or upgrading those structures, there should be.
So in your opinion, seeing as your planner and development, that is your expertise, do they need rehabilitation or only for cosmetic issues?
No, they just need cosmetic issues because there are no major damage on them.
What about the water supply to the markets?
The water supply at the market? Yeah, we have stand pipes there at the market for, for the market people to be able to use it.
You have what, stand pipes?
Stand pipe, yes.
Okay, are they enough?
No, not many things are enough, but they are there, the access is there for people to have it.
And is it Boho, is it supplied by Boho or is it Naik?
No, for the markets, it's.
Okay. In your statement, you said, oh, sorry.
Mr. Mari, before we went off to break, I asked whether you have a contract file.
What?
Whether you have a contract file, because you were answering questions and you said you had a contract file.
Yes.
We have checked what was submitted to the commission. These are files containing vouchers, but they are not contract files. So is it, are you referring to those files that are containing the vouchers? Or is there a specific contract file where all the contracts are contained?
You know, me, I don't deal with vouchers. Well, I am referring to a specific contract file, even after, when we went out for break, I spoke to Salab on that issue, yes, I have given to them.
Yes, but what we have from the council is files containing vouchers, payment vouchers, not the contract file.
Ah, this, this, this was.
And we were told that it is you that has that file.
Yes.
Yes, not with the Director of Finance, the contract file.
Not actually, the Director of Finance is not a custodian.
It's not?
He doesn't have it with him. While I was in Combo, he called me to say, where is the file? I said, the file, the contract file, the file is in my office. And I told him the location, and he went and accessed the file, and he said he had given to the investigators.
Okay, so what I will request you to do is to come in tomorrow morning and get to the investigators and reconfirm whether what is submitted is what you are referring to as the contract file or... Because the files we have seen, we have gone through them during the break, the lunch break, what we see is files containing vouchers. So you will go to the investigators, they have the files that they have collected from your office, but there's no contract file in them. So you will cross-check and reconfirm those files. And then if it is not there, you can get back to your council and try and see whether you can see the contract.
All right, okay.
Thank you. And just, let me just conclude on the issue of the Bureng guesthouse. I did ask you whether, what is the situation of the guesthouse? And you indicated that the guesthouse is not fit for purpose. And money was expended to build that guesthouse, and it was operational at some point. Because the 2020 and 2021 audit report made some findings about that guesthouse. So my question to you as the planner of the institution, what is your, what steps do you want to take to deal with that particular project that you have and which is abandoned, and which was money expended to put it up? And which could earn you revenue if you decide to renovate, to renovate the structures?
Yes, thank you, Ma. Okay, at one time, I was in contact with a personnel from MRC.
Which year is that?
That was 2022.
Yes.
I was in contact with a personnel from MRC. You know, they used to have a recycle station. I asked him whether they have any program around that and where we can make an arrangement with them so that they can use that facility as a recycle station and be paying to council. So he asked me, I'll also make further inquiries to see whether that is possible, whether we have any project covering that region, that part of the area. But later, when I went to him, he said there is no project that the MRC has, where they can be stationed in that facility to be able, for council to be able to generate.
Does Bureng have a guesthouse apart from that one that the council has?
I know that of the council, but you know, Bureng is a busy area, so I only know that of the council.
So what is the intention of the council towards repairing that guesthouse?
Yes, this has been a bone of contention within the council to see how do we make best use of those facilities? Can we rent it out of somebody to operate it privately and be paying something to the council? But that decision is just to reach at the general councils, but to find out the interested people who will do it, who will use it for that purpose.
But for how long should it take you people to decide on that?
You know, these are decisions that you cannot just single-handedly take it. So you have to be pushing it and be thinking about it so that council may come up with a decision.
But these are assets that the council owns?
Yes.
And the audit report have been highlighting the situation of the guesthouse. So it's either for you to consider taking a decision or to dispose of the property if you don't want to make use of it? Because you cannot invest in something and then you just leave it to completely degenerate, and you as the planner, we know you as a single person would not be able to do it, but it's your responsibility to advise council.
Yes, this is what I'm, yes, this is what I'm saying about the last meeting I had with the.
When was that last meeting?
No, no, what I mean, with the CEO.
When was that last meeting?
That was even last week, but that was not containing, I'm talking about Bureng guesthouse. There also was a facility that is owned by council. And we don't have the financial models to be able to do it. So we said we invite personnels, experts from public-private partnerships, to advise us what approach should we take to be able to make best use of that facility.
Do you have an asset register?
Yes, we have an asset register.
Please kindly provide us with the asset register for us to know what assets you have at the council.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, council, you may proceed.
You spoke in your statement about the development partners that the council has.
The?
Development partners.
Yes.
That you work with, development partners, can you tell us some of these partners that you work with?
We work with Health, Education, Red Cross, National Disaster Management Agency, National Disaster Management Agency, Forestry, Environment, Community Development, and a lot of others.
And how do you work together?
How do?
How do you work together with all of these? In fact, let's take the ministries first. What is your relationship with these ministries when it comes to development?
When it comes to our relationship, you know, there is what you call Technical Advisory Committee at the regional level.
Okay.
Which is chaired by the governor.
Yes.
So the vice chair is to that task is the council.
The vice, the vice chair is what?
To that committee is the council.
Okay.
We see you represent the council.
Okay.
Yes, so when there is an issue where our council need involvement, or council has an issue that they want an expertise from any of these partners, then we can engage them to do it.
How often does this Technical Advisory Committee meet?
Technical Advisory Committee will meet every month, depending on the request from the governor, because he's the chair.
You meet every month?
Yes.
And it is based on a request by the governor?
Yes, the governor is the chair, he can summon the meeting for the meeting.
Now, the committee is to advise whom, the council?
It consists of all the.
I understand who it consists of.
Okay.
What is its function?
The function is to make them accountable to the people so that governor can be informed and any other task member to be informed about the activity of each of those departments. Because it's a forum where you discuss is supporting the development of the region.
Okay, so the access, the functions of the Technical Advisory Committee is to provide technical advice to the council and to the board and the vivid development committees within its local government area and with a view to ensuring that local projects conform with national standards, policies, and priorities. So the function of the committee is to assist the council.
Yes.
So I'm asking this because you said that the governor, the committee meets when the governor summons it, summons it. So if the governor, when the governor is summoning a meeting, is it because the council has asked for it, or is it just out of his own volition?
No, no, that's the discretion of the governor.
So does the council ever request for a meeting by the committee?
No, governor is the chair, council can.
Mr. Mari, I understand that the governor is the chair. If the council had an issue and the council needed the committee to sit, would you not request the governor?
Yes, we can do that.
So that's what I'm asking you.
Yes, you can do that.
Does the council request for meetings with the advisory committee?
Yes.
Okay, give me one example of when you've asked for a meeting and for what?
Okay, this was during COVID-19.
Okay.
I was in my office, but then the chairman traveled and called me and said there is an issue that I want also discussed when I come back. So the following day he came, he said there is an outbreak of a disease starting from China, and it's already here, it was. So I want you to prepare something. We call a stakeholders' meeting and discuss about it and go out and sensitize people on what to do as preventive methods. That we did that and called all the stakeholders, and council provided the funding, then we started mass campaign awareness to the people within the region.
So the access that the Technical Advisory Committee shall meet at least once every two months. Does this happen?
No, that depends on the chair.
Asking you whether that's what happens or is that not what happens? I understand as well that it depends on the chair, but you're the one sitting there, so I'm asking you, does that happen? Is it once, at least once every two months, or is it longer?
Sometimes it swaps, sometimes it may go beyond that.
Okay, and does the committee keep meeting, sorry, meeting minutes?
Of course, because the committee development is the secretary, so they have meetings of all those meetings.
Okay, where's the community development office in Soma?
It's in Mansa Konko.
Sorry, where is it, is it near your office?
No, 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 no.
Is it in your council?
No, no, they have their own office, just by the governor's office.
Okay, so where does the meeting hold, at the governor's office?
Yes, the governor's bantava.
Okay, are you able to get copies of the meeting minutes from their office?
No, 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 I'm not me, because I'm not a member of that council committee.
You're not a member of the technical?
No, no.
Okay, I see what you mean. Who's the member, your CEO?
Yes, my CEO is the member.
Okay. Now, so these are the only, this is the only relationship you have with the ministries when you refer to development partners?
What, what do I try to say, which?
You said, when I asked you about the development partners that you had, I asked you to name us you. You named Education, Health, Red Cross, NDMA, Forestry, Environment, Community Development. And I said, let's deal with the ministries first, all right? These are the ones you've indicated are your development partners. So other than the Technical Advisory Committee, is that the extent of your development partnership with these ministries?
No, we have NGOs, we have NGOs.
I'm talking about the ministries.
Are the ministries? No, no, every ministry is represented at the region. And that representation is at the task level, so we work across every ministry.
So then you have Red Cross and NDMA?
Yes.
What is your partnership like?
Just the example I give you on this COVID-19. When council mobilized funds, there was Health being the leading institution concerning health, we asked them to lead and disseminate information, and we printed banners and targeted public places. That was involvement of every partner on that issue.
So have you had any other relationship with the Red Cross or with NDMA other than COVID-19?
Yes, any development that is, because we were at the time, where myself and disaster code in there, we are sort of marking some of the risk areas within the region. And there was a particular concern for an old well that is just by the roadside. And if you don't notice it, it can cause accidents. So I personally informed him about that, well, he said, yes, I've seen it.
So who did you inform personally? Who did you inform personally?
The disaster code in there.
Okay.
Then we went to the people who have that well and asked them to put up a protection so that nobody falls in.
Okay.
Yes.
So what did they put there?
They provided some stick and surrounded it.
They provided some what?
Some sticks and surrender it and cover it with heavy locks.
Okay, and this is something that the council couldn't do?
Yes, the council can come up with it, but first of all, conduct the person or the company owner who did it and leave it like that. Council can come in the event that they fail to respond.
Okay. You've spoken about, sorry, you said there are NGOs that you work with, which NGOs are these?
This NGO, Fijo in Our Hands.
Freedom in Our Hands.
Fijo in Our Hands and Freedom from Honga County.
So Future in Our Hands?
Yes.
And?
Freedom from Honga County. Okay, you know, Red Cross is also an NGO.
Sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
See, Red Cross is also an NGO.
Okay.
Yes, Fijo in Our Hands, Red Cross, and a lot of other NGOs.
So do any of these fund any of your projects?
What fund our project?
Do any of these NGOs fund any of your projects? How do they help the council?
No, the, for instance, when you say, let's say.
Future in Our Hands and Freedom from Honga.
Yes, Fijo in Our Hands, Our Hands. That was in, I think that was last July.
Okay.
They have a community sensitization program at Mandual. Mandual is one of the intervention areas. So they wanted to sensitize and build the capacity of that community. And I was also, council is also invited there to take part in that company with the aspect of the BDC.
So they were doing their own works and then they invited you?
Council, yes.
Okay, so, all right. Now, your statement, so you said since your appointment, the council has not single-handedly funded major development projects such as buildings, markets, such as building markets, road construction, or rehabilitation. However, I am of the knowledge that the council awarded several contracts for the provision of portable water with drilled boreholes and pipe networking for many communities in the region. Additionally, some projects are entirely implemented by GAMWorks with the council's counterpart contributions. So if I understand your statement, since you came to the council in August, sorry, in October 2019, there's been no major project? Other than the boreholes, there's been no major projects done by the council?
Yes.
Excuse me, what about the one that you said that have been implemented by GAMWorks? Which projects are those?
This was the project that I told you, when I came, was almost at the receiving and that's, that's almost the contract is completed.
The conference hall?
It is a conference center, it's one of them.
Is one of them?
Yes.
Is there another one?
We have Queenala Multipurpose Center, Japanese Multipurpose Center.
Okay.
Then we have Sara Mauro and Dazlame Electricity Expansion. We also have Kaf and Janakunda Water Project. Those are all funded by GAMWorks with counterpart contribution from council.
Without contribution?
With counterpart contribution.
With counterpart contribution?
Yes.
You're not speaking clear, so I can't hear you.
Okay.
And what is usually council's contribution, is it 10%?
No, no, it's 8%.
8%?
8% of the project cost.
And these are factored into your annual budgets?
Yes, these are factored into annual budget, yes.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any question?
The 8% you talked about, is it an 8% that was authorized by the general council? Or is it just a discussion by the Director of Finance?
No, no, it cannot be the discussion of the Director of Finance. When GAMWorks has funded, they will inform the council the package that they have and will ask the councils to identify projects that they think they can come up with the 8%. So when that is identified, then GAMWorks will come up with the cost. Out of that cost, then they will charge the council to pay 8% to GAMWorks.
So it is your partner that will determine your percentage contribution?
No, I think this is a policy issue.
It's a standard, we just want to, we just want to know.
Allow me to learn, these are also not conditions from GAMWorks. These are conditions from donor partners that are giving our funding GAMWorks.
Okay.
That this is what the council should do, this is what the central government should do, and this is what we should do as donor partner.
Yes, that is what we want to be clear.
Yes, exactly.
Who determine the 8%?
Yes.
Thank you, yes.
Yes, please, just remind me whether you have, when you were employed, whether you take a part in making or formulating any form of the development plan for the area council?
What do you mean development plan, apart from that of the council, you mean?
You don't understand development plan, you don't?
I understand, but what are you driving at?
There should be a development plan for every area council, is that the case?
Yes.
And how is this formulated?
Yes, this is what I'm saying, we drive all our development plans from the strategic plan.
Yes.
Yes, because we have a series of pillars.
Yes.
In the strategic plan. So whatever we can do within certain pillars, then we. Um, in the strategic plan, so whatever we can do within certain pillars, then we, 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 we'll fund that.
Is there a development plan?
Yes, there is a development, a development plan.
Every year, every year?
Every year, yes.
So do you take part in its preparation?
Yes, I take, take part in this preparation.
Since when?
Yeah?
Since when?
Since I was appointed.
When was that?
This was, um, for the council or being at Masa Konkwa area council?
I, I don't understand.
You know, I was appointed, um, in Cherewan, Bilka, then now.
This is Masa Konkwa area council?
Yes, 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 there is, yes.
Since when?
Yes.
Since when?
Since two, um, twenty nineteen.
So do you, do you have the copies?
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, up to date?
Yes.
Can you provide the copies?
Okay.
When can you do this?
Maybe this can be next week, because today, if I go home, I look into my appointment and other things.
It is your statement that there is a development plan for every year?
Yes.
Which you take part in?
Yes.
And it's in a document form?
Yes, but you know, I have to go back and, and look for those files and bring it.
There is a, does it exist or not?
It exists, because we agreed on that.
No, I, every year it exists?
Yes.
A comprehensive plan separate from this, from this, from any other plan?
Yes.
So who prepares this development plan?
This is prepared by the, the, the entire council.
What do you mean the entire council?
Here, I mean, I'm a, we probably, I'm a, in the office, we probably, I'm a, the current development plan. And at what level, councils also will submit their priority areas.
Right.
Yes.
So please provide since twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And let's talk about the, um, the, the guest house. I know you've already discussed that briefly. I've, I think I've heard you talk about the fact that when you came in twenty nineteen, you found the guest house in the state wars, is that not the case?
It is.
Is that not the case? In, in the current state wars, it is?
Yes.
So as we speak, what would be the current state of the guest house?
Uh, I've not been going there for a long time.
Why is that?
I, I, I cannot say.
Why is that?
No, no, when the need arise for me to go there, that's the time I, I go there, but, but there is only.
And what would be this need?
Uh, if there is an issue on the, at the house, maybe one of the collectors will inform me, a department that this and this is happening at the guest house, can you please come and see?
So currently, you mean there is no issue?
I cannot, I cannot accept that, because I've not been going there for quite a time.
How will you describe your, your function as the, as the director of planning, a, a, as a director?
I have already stated that, my roles and functions as director of planning.
But it seems you don't understand it very well.
Well, that's your version of the story. I, I understand, this is why I'm appointed by a commission.
But it is, it is for me to put my version to you?
Yes, exactly, I, I, I cannot do anything about that.
Yes, so therefore, and I'll ask you again, as, as, as the director of planning, how will you summarize your functions?
Well, I, I'm appointed by a commission, established by government. So I think, um, you should have that confidence with that, that, um, commission, that's appointed me.
I should have what?
You, I think you should have confidence in that commission, that's appointed.
How will you summarize your functions? What will you say will include your functions?
There, I say the coordination, the overall, um, development of the council.
In which area?
On, on public infrastructure and service delivery.
What kind of service?
Service, just as I said, reviews collection is one of, one of them. Um, we also contribute in child, child welfare programs, and a lot of other things, work with other development partners.
Now, um, you are familiar with the oil report, um, twenty? December thirty first, twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, do you have a copy?
No, I don't have a copy with me here.
Well, did you have chance to see the oil report?
Yes, when the oil report come, they will, um, inform us as what it was, yeah, now a copy will be made available for us to see it.
You what, sorry?
A copy will be made available for, for, for me to see it.
So you, you didn't see the copies?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying I didn't see the copy. It is, it is, it's in my office.
Now, the issue regarding the, this Buraan guest house, uh, and its current state had also been repeated in the, in the twenty twenty, um, oil report. Was that your attention?
What?
The issue regarding the, the Buraan guest house, its current state?
I've not been going there for the, for, uh, for a long time, but I just, I've actually counsel that. I've tried a way of engaging some people to be able to use it as their station, to facilitate some of the activities that they are doing, if at all, they have any activity in that area, but that didn't work well. Now we are thinking of, maybe if we can outsource somebody who may be interested, then we can give, have an agreement with him to operate the facilities and to be paid to the council for a certain number of years.
Who would you say will be responsible for?
Martin Abuja.
Not, not the management, but apparently to make sure that the state of the, the Buraan guest house is really in a very good condition.
To have it in a very good condition?
Yes.
Okay, alternatively, I think, um, the, the hotel hospitality industry, because we have already engaged them on our conference center, on our conference center, to be able to come with, in partnership, to manage it well, maybe to, maybe to, um, a standard where I just can be accommodated at that. Okay, with now, I think we can also sell this idea to them to go and see Buraan house, if at all, it suits their purpose, so that we make arrangement with them, so to be able to use it.
Has this issue been discussed at, at any level in the area council?
No, no, this has not been discussed at the area council, as far as Buraan, Buraan guest house is concerned.
So on page fifty six of the oil report, twenty twenty, um, we also have the issue of the boreholes, which you've already discussed.
Yes.
To a, to a certain extent. Now, um, the findings, were you very much familiar with the findings as per the, the oil report?
Yes.
What, what are the major findings as far as you're concerned?
The major findings are this, that we have discussed here, that Darusla issue and, and Minna.
And what?
Minna, Minna, the community is called Minna.
Yes.
Yes.
Now, let me read to you what, um, was said by the auditor.
Okay.
On page fifty six, that we observed number of defects, for example, leakages were noticed from the overhead tanks due to faulty pump control boxes, which protect the pump against insufficient supply of water. Would you say that would, would be a fair assessment by the auditor?
The auditor came.
Was this to your notice?
I, I didn't go there with the auditors, but I went there with the investigation team. This was after the defect liability period, now the community has.
Because afterward?
Defect liability period.
Yes.
Now, this is only now the, so, um, the responsibility of the community.
No, let, let, let's first discuss the problem, and we'll now discuss the, the responsibility.
These, these, these are facilities, they are bound to have problems.
I'm not saying they are not bound to have problems, let's discuss the problems first. In fact, they are not bound to have problems, um, at, at, at the period. You can't tell me you, if you have done your work to, to give the, um, the contractor, to the proper contractor, and you have followed all your process, that these problems are bound to happen? You can't say that?
No, no, this, 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 this are facilities that, that are subjected to the, to the result.
And so?
Uh?
So there was, or, immediately they were built?
Not immediately, this is after the, 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 the period.
And what is the period? Six months?
Six months, yes.
And what have you done within the six months?
There was no problem. There was no problem in some of those things.
There was?
No problem in some of those, only if you have an issue, which I have explained here.
Oh, wait a minute. This work was not really done in the most appropriate way. It's not a standard work.
How do I say then that?
That is not in the report. It is here. You don't tell me how I assess this.
West African leaders met.
Statement you had said.
In Abuja Sunday.
When it comes to the borehole?
Yes.
Exactly, so how are you telling me that? How do I assess this?
Yes.
How will you look me in the eye and tell me how do I assess that? It is in your own statement, did you not highlight the problem?
How do you decide this?
Did you not highlight the problem that was found in your own statement?
These are the projects that are.
I have asked you a question, just answer the question, you move on.
What?
You just stated some of the problems?
I have stated them, yes.
So why are you saying that, um, I'm asking if it is my, me making up these problems?
No, no, that's not your making.
Exactly, and what are the problems that you have stated in your, in your statement?
Yes, um, the, the, the connection of the borehole from the water source to the tank, I have discussed about that.
Yes, yes, tell, tell us this.
Okay, um, a minor problem also, I have discussed about that.
Tell us the problem.
Yes, I said.
I've asked you.
The connection.
Yes.
The connection, um, this thing, the galvanized pipe was used.
Instead of what?
Instead of, instead of the polytene tube.
And when did you do that?
Uh, that was after the, the, the defect liability period.
Was that normal?
That was not normal.
Why?
There should, there should be a constant supervision of work.
Exactly.
And, and even before, however, we should ascertain that.
Was that wrong?
Which I have admitted that is a default on our side.
It's not only a default on your side. It's not only, um, a default on your side, the idea here is we want to understand, if it was a basic error, then that would be probably acceptable. This had been happened in most of your contracts. So it's not only a one-time issue. Do you understand that? Because the whole problem is you don't follow the procedure. The idea that you even have to pre-qualify the, the bidder, have you, have you done that?
Yes, the bidder wa- 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 was chosen to be the most responsible.
Was there a pre-qualification procedure?
Oh, this is why they are assessed and, and evaluated.
I see, when I asked you one question, you are now giving me some stories. Was there a pre-qualification for the bidder? How many people bid, uh, for this project?
It, I can't be a number of people, because it's the procurement that collected, that collected the invoices.
You are part of the contractors committee?
No, I'm not part of the contract, I'm part of the development committee.
You are part of the contractors committee?
No.
Not at all?
No, no, I'm part of the development committee, not contractors committee.
And what, what would be your role as, um, member of the development committee?
Uh?
What would be your primary role?
As what?
Part of the development committee?
Uh, it's, 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 um, to look at the submission and make an analysis of them.
So, again, the, the equipment, the materials that were used to drill this borehole, as you have outlined, in fact, what we have said is will, will really be a fraction of what has been found by the auditor. You understand? So the problem is only, uh, the lack of, the fact that they have used the galvanized pipe instead of the polytene tube. There's only one part of the problem.
Yes.
Do you understand?
Yes.
The idea is the entire border was drilled, was not up to standard.
Yes.
And so probably there was the need to recon, um, to contract another person.
Yes.
Or another contractor.
Yes.
So that if there was pre-qualification, if the procedures were followed, then that would, that would have been avoided.
Yes, the contract, this said contractor, our experience with them, uh, with him, this is the only borehole that he drilled for us and that has a problem, but the rest are all okay.
Now, what, what do you mean the rest are okay?
There, he entered in many, in many sites.
How many?
And we don't have issue with those things.
Like which sites?
Like, like Mandina.
Medina, there's a problem with Medina, Medina Kyang West?
Yes.
There's a problem.
What is the problem?
Exactly, so on page sixty six.
What is the problem with Medina?
I am coming.
Okay.
On page sixty six of the audit report, that clearly outlined that there were problems in, uh, respect to the boreholes that have been drilled. And then one of the areas is Joubakunda. Jarra East. The other one is Darusla Jarra West.
Okay.
Then you have the Medina Kyang East.
Yes.
And Nema Kyang East.
Nema.
Yes, so for you to come here and say that this is the only one that has, that has a problem is not true.
Is it?
And that is the problem.
Okay, what is the problem?
First, that there were leakages were noticed from the overhead tanks due to faulty pump control boxes. He also have, that there appears to be a general issue across the site, site visits. In many communities, people had to make manual interventions to turn on or off the valve, including having to climb up the tank to access the switch. So this was not in to your notice?
No, no, it's not, not, not of my notice. I told you, the time auditors visited that, uh, those projects, already, the defect liability period, our agreement with the contractor has almost passed.
But there is no supervision, my friend?
No, no, there is supervision.
There is supervision?
There is supervision, of course. This is, this is why, um, at certain stage, we'll be sit there and give recommendation to, to the, to the councils to pay, to pay the contractor during the implementation. So after the effect liability period, it's no longer the responsibility of council, it's the responsibility of the community, because we have asked them to put up a sustainable development plan.
Where is the report?
Uh?
Did you prepare a report after the, the defect liability period?
That is, that is in, is in the contract.
Have you prepared any form of report to indicate that within the six months period, there were no problems at all?
That is embedded on the contract.
What is embedded in the contract?
That, uh, um, the contractor will be liable for, um, payment after, after, after the effect liability period.
That is liability.
Okay.
Whether, within the defect liability period, we is six months, is that not the case?
Yes.
Whether, within that six months, you have done your supervision work to make sure that there are problems or not?
Yes, we did that.
And, and where is the report?
No, we don't, I don't have it formally, but I will engage the council to be observing and I also to go there to, to, to see.
Why is the evidence that you have done an observation within the period, the defect liability period, to ascertain as to whether the work had any defect or not?
Yes, I think we, 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 we'll improve on, on, on that.
No, no, forget about improvement. Forget about improvement. Ask me questions, and the things you have done, or the things you have not done. And I want answers, answers.
I don't, I don't, I, I, I don't produce any report.
So how will we now trust you when you say that you have done your, your, your observation within the six months? You award contract, and then does you go to bed, and that's what you do?
Okay.
What you do?
Alright.
What do you mean by alright?
What do you mean by award contract to the bed?
You don't really care whether the work that was being done.
I, I.
Because wait a minute, you have asked me a question.
Okay.
You don't care where the work you, you, um, the contract you awarded to a contractor, when the work is being duly executed up to standard, you don't care about that?
Anyway, I don't agree to that. Maybe this, that's what, how you think about it.
But that's fine, that's my opinion.
Yeah, that's, and it should be respected.
Absolutely, and now you, now prove me wrong. You now show me the steps you had taken to make sure that you would, um, these, all these problems that are repeatedly happening were avoided, or could be avoided. You said you supervise, why is the evidence that you supervise?
Uh, we, we go to site and, 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 and prepare a site visit report.
But where is the evidence that you have gone to the site and said you supervise?
Yes, um, those site reports, visit reports will be made available.
But you said you don't have it?
Uh-huh, no, no, we prepare site vi- vi- visit report.
Do you have the site visit report?
Yes, I have site report for, for some of the, the, these areas.
Within the six months, at the defect liability period?
No, it's not within the, during the, um, from the implementation over the period of handing over.
If you had visited the, and done proper your, your functions and visited this, this, this project, you would have realized the problems.
Yes.
That is the hard part, but you don't do that.
Okay.
But do you agree with that?
No, I do make a supervision. Maybe to say that I don't produce a formal report, I can, I can, I, I, I'm, I accept that.
Again, the other problems were.
Do you issue a certificate of completion after the work is done?
No, we don't issue a certificate of completion.
Who is supposed to issue certificate of completion?
That is not the procedure that we have, but it should be prepared by the Department of Planning and Development in consultation with the community. Because sometimes, um, um, I will ask the community, before we made any payment, make sure that there is no problem during the defect liability period.
So is it, is it a requirement that you should pro, give, issue a certificate to show that the work that was contracted has been done based on specification and is correct?
That's how it should be marked, that's, that's very correct.
But.
We are, we are not doing that.
Alright, thank you. Yes, council, you may proceed.
At what period do you offer, do you, should you, um, award or give a certificate of completion?
Um, after the, the, the defect liability period, if community, um, are satisfied with it.
Were you satisfied with the work?
Yes, we are satisfied with, with the work to, to, to level, but most of the time, communities don't respond.
Were you satisfied with the work?
Yes, this is why we pay, um, prepare payment certificate for contract.
No, 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 the payment certificate or pay, pay, payment slip have nothing to do with satisfaction of work.
Okay.
Because, you see, the idea is even the, there had been faults, always, even at the point of awarding this contract, you don't follow procedure. You don't follow procedure, that is standard for most of the area councils. You and I know that is standard. Procedures are handed followed to the latter. That's one, that's why you have all these problems following one after the other. Because if you don't build your house with a strong foundation, you are bound to have problems. And most of these things are done based on self-interest, that's the point. We said as it is. Why wouldn't you issue out a certificate of completion?
Okay.
Why?
No, no, it is not our practice to be doing that.
No, no, it is not.
It should be, it should be, but we are not doing it.
It is not a matter of practice.
Yes.
It's a matter of must.
This is what I'm saying, this is what I'm trying to convey.
Exactly.
Yes.
My friend, you are a professional in your own right, you have a degree. You know that you are supposed to inspect, supervise, make sure that the work has been done, is in accordance with the contract, and then you issue out a certificate of completion.
Exactly.
But you don't do that and it's not a mistake.
Okay.
It's intentional. You want to tell me it's a mistake?
No, I don't agree to the fact that it's intentional, what should be.
Is it a mistake?
Is it, why should be intentional for me? Why? When my primary responsibility is to provide, when the primary responsibility of the council is to provide services to people.
Why would you do your functions there?
Maybe we can take it as a mistake, but not intentional.
We can take as a what?
As a mistake, but not intentional.
You will have a practice of not following the procedure, not issuing out certificate of completion and it's a mistake? Once, twice?
No, I think the only issue that Amma emphasize on, that is the direction. But the other process that we are talking of, we don't have an issue with those things.
Forget whether a particular contract was executed duly or not. He would not know that if there is no certificate of completion, which would suggest that probably you have done your work in making sure that you have assessed the work that was done.
Yes.
Is that not the case?
Yes.
But you don't do that.
This is what I'm saying.
It's not a mistake.
Ah.
Is it a mistake?
Yes, it's a mistake.
How is it a mistake?
Anyway, I don't know, how do you accept it?
For all the contracts?
Not for all the contracts, this is for specific contract, not for all contracts.
You said you don't award, you don't give.
Certificate of completion, yes, we don't give certificate of all contracts, yes.
So is it a mistake for all contracts?
We have not taken that as a procedure and it should be.
Is it a mistake or not?
It should be, we should be offering this thing, how do you get certificate of completion?
So it's more of a negligence than a mistake?
I cannot take it as negligence, I take it as a mistake.
For five contracts awarded?
Even that, yes.
Six contracts awarded?
Even that, yes.
For qualified individual like you?
Exactly.
A degree holder like you?
Degree holders, Amma, soldiers will operate and the patient will die.
The what?
The patient will die.
I don't understand.
You don't understand that?
No, what, I didn't hear what you said.
I say even doctors, soldiers will conduct operation, sometimes the patient will not survive it.
Absolutely. But if they do due diligence, then let me respond to that. Let me respond to that. Negligence doesn't only arise when there is failure. If you had executed, you may not be able to guarantee that the contractor will do his work perfectly well, but you will be able to guarantee and to know where the work that was done was done rightly or wrong.
Yes.
So when the doctor treats a patient and the patient died, all that matters is whether the doctor had done his job or not.
Okay.
Is that not the case?
Yes.
Because that is not within the powers of the doctor, is that not the case?
Yes.
So the same thing with you, execution of the contract for it to be perfected is not in your hands or may be in your hands. But to make sure that at the end of the contract was executed, whether the contractor will be held accountable by doing your job to supervise is in your hands. Is that not the case, sir?
Yes.
Which you failed to do.
Okay.
Okay, it's not an answer. It's either you accept you have failed to do that or no, or you don't.
I will take it as a mistake, not fail to do it.
But if you, if it is a mistake, you have failed to do it.
Look, I take it as a mistake, not fail to do it. Because fail to do it means that I realize the problem, I decided to neglect.
Did you know or did you not know at the time that you were supposed to issue out a certificate of completion?
That is, that should be the best practice.
It is a direct question.
We are not doing that.
What I ask you is a direct simple.
No, no, we are not doing it.
No, 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 my question is very simple. Did you or did you not know at the time that you were supposed to issue out a certificate of completion?
No, no, I don't know.
But it's very convenient to say you don't know.
Yes.
And you know what? If you say you don't know, it means you are not qualified to do your job.
Okay.
You're not, because as simple as a qualification, completion, you are not qualified to do your job. That's it. But you know why? Because you're not being truthful. You said you knew that it's supposed to be the practice, but you just don't do it.
Yes.
So you have lied to the commissioners. You're not honest in your answer. You knew at the time a certificate of completion must be issued. You even answered that question to ask by the chairperson, did you not?
No, I didn't answer that.
You did. You know that you are supposed to issue out a certificate of completion. Is that not the case?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
So don't mislead anyone here. You don't do that. So let's turn to page seven. The issue regarding the state of the toilet facility at the Somma main car park. Was that to your notice as well?
Yes, that is to my notice.
What is the problem there?
Ah, the toilet is already docked at Somma car park.
Yes.
Okay, but based on the experience, I have discussed with the car park committee.
Yes.
That we can provide facilities for you. But we are not going to be responsible for its sustainability. That we should go into contract and when we give it to you and you start, Amma, you making user fee.
Yes.
For the sustainability of the facility.
Right.
Of which I have done in the other two councils where I came from and it went successfully. So I was trying to do a similar thing in Somma.
What is the problem with the toilet at the car park? See, when I ask you one question, you answer me, you try to really be.
The problem is at the car park, we already have Amma, na wake water there.
Yes.
Na wake water there. Now, they are asking also to put up a tank. And even that there is no water, then that tank facility can be used.
Let me read to you the finance of the auditor and you tell me whether you agree or not. The finance were, you had spent 70,000 pesos. Um, and the facility however remained unused up to the time of the visit. And the contract document was also not provided for audit. The facility had no water and electricity supply. The place was poorly ventilated. There were no wash hand basins or urinal installed. Urinals installed. The roof had visible gaps between the wall and the corrugated roof. And the toilet floor was tiled. Are these true?
No, no, some are not true.
What is not true?
Amma, we have a urinal canal for the main part.
What is not true?
Main part, you say there is no urinal canal.
There is no?
Urinal canal.
Yes, installed, yes.
Yeah, there is one at that of the men, because you have the.
For the male part?
To the male part.
So how about the female part?
We, female part, they will just use the squat well, they will use the squat well. Not they say, for the men we have.
So don't say it's not true, say it's partly, not accurate.
Okay, then it's not partly accurate, yes.
So why would you have one for the female toilet?
No, because due to the nature of the female, you cannot compare them to men. So we provided them the toilet seat. Because I also look at the size of people. This toilet may be a problem for people with heavy weight. So we decided to put up the toilet seat where women can sit and comfortably use it. But for the men, for the urinary party, it's already there and they can stand and use it. That's why we, that is the difference.
But you see, the management did not agree to what you are saying.
Which management?
The area council management, of course.
They are not in agreement with that?
With what you are saying, because they do not deny the finance of the auditor. Their response is this, that the project was identified by the car park committee with technical advice from the director of planning. That it is suitable to be used, suitable to be constructed. There, after the completion, they decide not to use it. That management will engage the plumber responsible to connect the water pipe in the facility. All the verification will be done to remedy defects observed during the inspection. And the officer responsible is the director of planning, is that you?
Yes, that's me.
So they are entirely with the auditor?
But I don't know who must be the auditor of, the author of this report. Because what happened, yes, I told you.
Because you are the one who failed your job as far as their concern.
No, no, I didn't fail, what you are, you are asking, some of these things that you have done so that they are not available there, they are available. Even the gap that we are seeing between the corrugate and the wall plate, I asked Amma, the contractor not to seal it because of the ventilation, so that we can have enough ventilation within those two chambers.
Is that how it should be done?
Yeah, because.
What is the proper way to ventilate a toilet, to provide ventilation?
You provide windows.
Yes.
You provide windows.
You advise the contractor to leave gaps?
It depends on the situation also and the usage, because this is for the public. The public lighting cannot be as the same as Amma individual lighting.
That is not your concern. It's not your primary concern.
And that should.
The work should be done, the management is supposed to be done. You are employed as a professional to give professional advice, not your just mere opinion. Contrary to the standard practice.
Okay.
If you are building your own toilet, you don't do it like that. But it's the public toilet.
Okay.
You cannot decide that you allow gaps between the roof, the corrugate and the wall just because that's what you feel is the best way. When you are sitting up here saying that windows should be the best way of ventilation, it means your actions are intentional, deliberate.
Meaning that this will be have the free circulation of air. Because free circulation of air, the ventilation. Because if you have a window at one side, it's only at one side, but this will have a general open.
You see, that would not be correct. Because when I had asked you, the best way to provide ventilation, you said is to have windows.
Yes.
You didn't tell me is to leave in gaps.
But that can be also an additional advantage for the ventilation.
Building your own toilet, in your own compound, you will leave gaps in the whole world.
That's different from public toilet.
But what's the difference?
That is, because public toilet is more.
What is the difference?
That public toilet is more heavily used than the home toilet.
But no, the difference is there in your own compound, your money is going there.
Ah, yes, okay.
The public toilet is not your money.
No, that's not public money.
Yes, it's public money.
Yes.
There's a difference.
Okay.
And so in fact, you should use that to make sure that you provide the best services.
Okay.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, I agree with that.
And that situation would not be the best situation.
Okay.
Okay, it's not an answer to the question. You have the right to agree or disagree.
I agree.
Exactly.
Okay.
That will be all for my responses.
Now, Mr. Mari, um. Did you take any loan with the council?
Yes, I took loan with the council, yes.
How many loans have you taken over the period?
Uh, twice.
Have you repaid?
Yes, I'm paying it.
You are paying it now?
Yes.
And how much was the loan?
Ah?
How much was the loan?
Uh, the first one was hundred thousand.
Yes.
If I can remember, hundred thousand.
You finished paying that one?
No, I have not finished paying it, I'm paying it.
The second one is how much?
The second one is twenty thousand.
Have you finished paying that one?
No, no, I'm still servicing those loans.
Those two loans?
Yes.
So did you sign, when you took the loan, did you sign any document?
Yes, I signed a document.
Can you provide us with that document?
Okay, but not with me here.
Yes.
Okay.
Just note it so that it could be part of those documents that you put.
Okay.
Now, did you benefit from your medical scheme?
Medical scheme?
Yes.
No, not to my knowledge, I don't benefit from medical scheme, I do treatment on my own when I have an issue.
So, are you telling us that the council doesn't have a medical team, it doesn't support anybody that has medical issues?
I cannot say that for certain, because not.
But you are part of senior management.
I'm part of the senior management. Whenever I have a health issue, I do go to the hospital on my own and pay.
But you are not aware of any medical scheme that is existing at the council?
No, I don't, I'm not aware of that.
Now, um.
Sorry, Ma, you say what, let me provide what?
You provide me with the agreements, the loan agreements you have taken with the council.
Okay.
Where you give this loans, cash or was it transferred to your account?
No, I was giving a cheque.
Cheque?
Yes.
Alright, and when was this?
This, I cannot remember them all.
Which year is that?
There were twenty thousand, it's twenty.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, yes.
Yes, the hundred thousand was when?
The hundred thousand, I think that was twenty-two.
So when we look at the bank statements, we will see you withdrawing that kind of money.
What I'm withdrawing, yes, I, yes, from the council's bank statement, you mean?
Yes.
Yes.
What, which cheques were issued to, which bank?
They are all trust bank.
They are all trust bank.
Yes.
Now, um, do you know how many bank accounts does the council have?
No, I don't know.
Do you withdraw from any of the accounts of the council?
Especially I don't know the names of the account, I only go and withdraw.
So do they write cheques in your name to withdraw, to pay services?
They don't that, yes, they put in my name.
They put in your name?
Yes.
So the people that you pay, you are giving the cheques in your name to pay that? That they give you the cheques in your name?
Yes.
And you go and withdraw it?
Yes.
From the council's account?
Yes.
And you pay the services?
Yes.
That they ask you to pay?
Yes.
What sort of services do you pay for?
They will, Amma, this month they deduction from my loan, because they will look at that and say, it will deduct from this period to this period. And.
No, I do not get what you are saying, you said what?
When I have taken the loan.
No, not the loan, I mean, do the council give you write cheques in your name to pay for services?
No, no, no.
Any service?
No, 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 no.
You've never been given a cheque to pay for the contracts that you give to the cleaners, that you take at home?
No, 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 that has never happened.
Alright.
Yes.
So you have never been given any cheques?
No, no, to pay for service, no.
And your name doesn't reflect in any of the accounts withdrawing council's money?
Apart from my own personal loan, no.
And your salary?
And my salary, yes.
Which bank do you bank with?
I bank with Amma GT Bank.
That's your salary account?
That's my salary account, yes.
What about your savings account?[1658.22]
I don't have savings account.
So can I just ask one question before we close?
Yes.
Mister Mari, are you aware of the disposal of the council vehicles?
Yes.
You are part of the committee?
Yes, I was part of the committee, yes.
How many vehicles were there?
I think there were three.
Three or four?
Three or four, I cannot remember exactly, but I was part of the committee.
Okay, so let me just go through, so there was a Volvo?
Hmm.
Right?
Okay.
Now I'm asking you, was there?
What, a Volvo?
A Volvo.
A Volvo, yes.
There was a Mitsubishi?
Yes.
Um, let me see, I think there was a Pajero.
Okay.
Do you remember?
Yes, Pajero, yes.
Okay. And do you know how they were disposed of?
I think, um, uh, they have called for interested readers to come, and, and.
Sorry. Do you say you don't, is it how many, how many cars were disposed?
It's between three to four.
It is not three to four, it is five cars that were disposed.
Five cars?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Were you not in the committee?
I'm in the committee.
It is not four, three or four, it is five cars.
Five cars?
Yes.
Okay, it's a long time now.
Uh, ca- ca- council, please.
Thank you. So you were, you were explaining what you know, what happened, or how the disposals went?
Yes, I, I'm, I, the first way for the, for disposing them is to contact people within the office who are interested.
To contact the who?
People within the office who are interested, if at all they are going to, I'm, dispose them. If at all you, you are an officer or a council and have interest in it, you can just come up and re- re- register your interest. But I understand that there is nobody among the staff and the council who have expressed interest in those cars. So then it is taken outside.
Okay.
Yes.
And how did you take it outside?
They informed people that these are available here for, 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 for disposal.
Did anybody, did you advertise at any point?
No, 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 that is not to my knowledge.
But there was a suggestion that it should be by way of public auction?
Yeah, public auction, auction, yes.
But then your disposal committee sat and said that it would not make sense to do it by public auction?
Well, we sat down and, and said whosoever is interested can, can come over.
So let me just show you. Assistant registrar? Please just show the witness this page on the page after. First, can you just confirm that those are the meeting minutes for your disposal committee for the vehicles?
Yes, these are the, yes, these are the minutes.
What date was the meeting held?
This was fourteenth January twenty twenty one.
Okay, and you were present?
Yes, I was present, my, my name is, and there, there is, there was, I am a form issued to us to append our signature.
Okay.
Yes.
To say that you.
I was part, part of it.
Excuse me, so in, though, in that, at that meeting, rather, you would confirm that the ideal mode of dis- disposal was supposed to be public auction?
Yes.
And someone, I think, can you check, I think in the last comment at the bottom of the page said you would get more from approaching people directly rather than public auction?
I think I, I, I also want will be the mode of payment.
Sorry?
The mode of payment.
Okay, can you just check then, read it, I was trying to help you avoid reading all of it, but please.
Where exactly you want me to, to.
Just continue.
Okay.
Do you want to be assisted, Mister Mari?
I, I don't, I don't exactly, well, okay, there are, there are. Yes, I want to be assisted to know exactly.
Okay, okay, please hand it over.
So I've marked two points, if you can just read them out.
Okay. The admin officer, Mister Boa Tinte, stated that when you talk about public auction, the price is always at the lower rate. And that, and, and in that regard, the installment payment should be discouraged. The chief executive officer of, of the council, Mister Par- Parcet Caesar, has said that the importance to engage the interested buyer for the Volvo because the actual auction, the price of this offer will be better than the public au- auction.
Okay, so what, what do you understand by that?
That, um, doing it will be better than making it po- 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 publicly.
Okay, so it's better to engage the private buyer directly than to auction the vehicles?
Yes, that according to me, that is the statement from the CEO.
That is what, sir?
The statement from the CEO.
That is the statement from the CEO?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And one of the vehicles was purchased or was supposed to be purchased by somebody called, is it Mampa Sambu?
Okay.
Can you check?
Yes.
Do you know who that is?
I know Mampa, yes.
You don't know him?
No, I say I know Mampa.
Oh, you know?
Yes.
Is that the same as Chef Boyo Samba?
Huh?
Is he the same person as Chef Boyo Samba? Or is it somebody different?
No, I have no Mampa, M- Mampa, but I don't know the chef.
Who is Mampa?
Mampa is an electrician in Somma.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright, and who are the other purchasers?
I'm, the director of fin- finance also exposed interest, that is Baijibi.
Baijibi Sala?
Yeah, Jibisala, yes.
Okay, and who else?
And I think Sidiba also exposed interest.
Who is Sidiba?
Sidiba, the, the, the contractor.
The contractor for the bow hulls?
Bow hulls, yes.
Okay.
Okay, and, and CEO also exposed interest.
Okay, so there were four vehicles that were disposed of?
I cannot understand, but these are some of the people that I remember that they are, they have exposed interest.
Do you know whether the CEO ended up purchasing any of the vehicles?
Whether?
Did the CEO buy any of those vehicles?
I don't, no, I don't, I don't know.
You don't know?
No, I don't.
What about Baijibi Sala?
I don't know about that, after the meeting, I didn't make any follow up.
So they didn't report to you? I mean, you didn't sit back to know what was sold, what wasn't sold?
No, no.
So how do you know if they were sold?
I, I wouldn't know that, because at the time, they, they made their offer. And they are giving the, the green light to go ahead and, and make payment, so that is where I ended.
But wasn't it your job as a disposal committee to ensure that those goods or those vehicles were disposed of?
Yes, it is our job, and there was, I'm, I'm, a meeting, I cannot recall when, but there was a follow up what, as what is the pay, mode of payment that have already been conducted for those auction vehicles.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you get us those meeting minutes, please?
Whether I have access to those meeting minutes?
Provide us a copy of those minutes so that we can know what happened?
Okay, alright, okay.
Alright, thank you.
Are there any further questions? No question. Um, um, Mister Mari, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, you, for now, this chat, but if we have a need to recall you to clarify any issue.
Okay.
We will do so, and we'll expect you to provide us these, um, documents.